All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five meeting to order. We do have a forum here, we have a full house tonight, a city councilor. And the first meeting of the year. And wish everybody a happy new year. A little late in the month, but it still is the new year. And also, a pretty good crowd here tonight, so I'm guessing maybe some of you might have cabin fever. Maybe this is, can get out. Uh, but anyway, it's good to see everybody and to have you here with us. And if you would, if you bow with us, we'll have a word of prayer and then we'll move into our meeting. Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for yet again another opportunity to gather here tonight. We pray that you'll bless this meeting, bless everybody that participates in it, Lord. We're thankful for everything you do for us. We're thankful that we have, uh, so far as we know, survived the cold weather and then without anybody being seriously harmed. And we thank you for your protection. We pray for your guidance now and ask you to bless us as we go through this meeting and forgive us of our sins. Amen. All right, got a set of minutes from last year, December seventeen. Anybody wanna act on those?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? Okay, if not, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. This is the time of the meeting where we come to public business and comment. And I'm guessing there's a few people wanna speak to us, but I'm gonna call on a young man first. Clayton, you ready?
Yes, sir.
He's got a proposal for us. Step up here and give us your name and tell us what you wanna do. Mama's smiling back there, I know he tells she's proud of him.
She, thanks for your dollars. Anyway, hi, I'm Clayton Merritt. I'd like to propose an Eagle Scout opportunity for myself. I'd like to build an information center that will allow for train travelers to get out of the rain, see some metal signs that will have, one will have the history of Watertown, the history of the steam engine. Another sign will have, um, a local map of restaurants and restrooms they can go to. In that, on that sign in the bottom corner will be a QR code they'll be able to scan and have in their hand to walk around and see these places. It will be handicap accessible. I'd like to start in May and end in June somewhere. Uh, where this is gonna be located will be the north side of the concrete across from Bonds Construction. The concrete pathway there.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
You talk about the pavilion down here, is that where you're putting it?
Yes, sir, it's gonna be.
On the north side?
Yes, sir.
In the grass?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I like it, I liked it when you came in the other day and told us about it, but I wanted to hear you.
Yes, sir.
You went a little further with it tonight. More information, so I think that'd be a very good thing for our merchants and visitors to know what we're about, so.
Who's gonna update it when things change?
I do not have that information yet, but there will be a person that will be doing that.
I think it's a great idea, but just as you go to college, have somebody that's, you know, gonna keep that updated, businesses come and go. It may be the Chamber or somebody like that, but just get that connection going, okay? Cause I think it's a great idea.
Yes, ma'am.
He probably don't wanna be fifty-two or fifty-three years old and still keeping that up.
No, he's like, why did I start this project?
Anybody else got any questions? Uh, we have, we've had several Eagle Scout projects over the year, all that really benefited this community. We hadn't had one in a couple of years. I, I don't recall what it takes to get you started or what you need for us to do here tonight, so you tell us what you need.
All I just need is your permission. I'll have a form that I'll need you to sign whenever I get it. Uh, this won't cost the city a dime. I'll do fundraising with scouts to get the money in order to pay for it and do it, so. All I just need is the approval, that's all, so.
I have one quick question, if I understood you correctly, Mike, you may correct me on this. You were thinking in the area near where we had the ceremonial groundbreaking for the turntable?
Uh, no, you're, you're up next to the.
If you're looking at the pavilion, or the green pavilion from the road, it's on the right side of the road. The, like, the road going past the green pavilion, it's gonna be.
Across the street from the pavilion on the right?
Yes, sir.
More in front of Bond versus to the left where the sign is for the?
Right.
Turntable, okay.
Okay, do you know for sure it's on our property?
I'm not sure, that's a question that I have no clue, so.
Okay, we'll need to direct you on that, or you'll need to get permission from?
Yes, sir.
Whoever owns the other property, well, we've got.
It either be near or T dot, and I recommend staying up near his property.
Yeah, I think he's gonna be, what he's talking about is gonna be on our property, I believe, but I'll get Mr. Morgan to go down there with you and you tell him what you're thinking and.
Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah, and if you were on the other side, I was gonna say, we gotta make sure we don't put it in a place that will interfere with what is gonna be going in the future for the turntable.
That's correct.
But if you're on the other side of the street, as long as we on the property, I don't know of anything else that's going over there.
It's a city project, so it doesn't have to follow formal protocol, but do you want that to work through a planning commission?
Okay. Are you an Eagle Scout?
I am.
I thought you was.
Oh, I didn't. Long time ago.
It doesn't matter.
Do you want that to go through a normal planning commission process, go site plan?
Does it need to?
City property, it's a city project, it's not.
I, I don't, I don't wanna hold this young man up, if he's ready to go, I'm ready for him to go.
If he's ready to start in May, I mean, we can get a planning commission long as he's in it.
Why don't you get us a, a site plan together and let us take a look at it?
Sounds good.
And maybe do something to bless it further, we'll do.
Yes, sir, sounds good.
And just keep you up. Help, you said it'd be done in June?
End of June, yes, sir.
That's quicker than most government things move.
Do we need a motion?
We do, to accept, to approve his project.
I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I didn't think there'd be any opposed to it.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
We thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
And the community will thank you.
My pleasure.
We'll make sure you get some publicity out of that.
And there's a gentleman behind you that's gonna help you out. When I said you need somebody in your back pocket to help update it, he's the man, okay?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, thank you.
He's got a little history. But he's got a little more history than you got. Thank you, Clayton, appreciate it, buddy.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, anybody else from the public, Mr. Dowd, come on up?
Well, I'm gonna bear with that news, I'm, I'm asking for money.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, public business is closed?
Uh, we had the bathrooms are done, uh, the men's side is done, and we had to redo the plumbing because when they put the divide in for the stalls, they drilled right in the plumbing. And that's the problem with the floor, it got, because there's only that much space, the water from the sewer got in and just evaporated and rotted the wood. So we're over our budget right now by a thousand dollars. And I was wondering if we could possibly get a donation from the city or anybody that knows where I can get a thousand dollars to cover it.
Well, I made a speech, I think, a couple of meetings ago, that we weren't gonna spend anything else for a while, but for this, this is a community project and I don't have a problem with it. You need a thousand?
Yeah, just.
Do we need to maybe make it a little larger in case you run into another problem?
No, we're done with the bathroom, we're done with the men's.
I like what you're thinking, most people, and they won't mind them again, but they, you know, it goes along with the job.
We'll be back when we start the women's bathroom next year.
Oh, okay. All right, is there a motion to approve that?
I make a motion to approve the thousand dollars.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next, you, you wanna jump up? The vault just closed. Ready? Yep, come on up. Bring the young citizen with you. Come on up, big guy.
Okay, hello? You got? Hi. My buddy and I here, um, have a favor or wanting to know. We, I just moved into apartment in the square, and we overlook a tree in the square, and we wanted to put a birdhouse in that tree. And I told my friend it would be proper to ask the town if we could put a birdhouse in that tree. We've done our research, one nail will not kill a tree, it might bruise it, but it's not gonna kill the tree. We realized that it is a house coming in on property, so we'll take care of the taxes as we need to on this new real estate. And we will be responsible for all repairs. We will sign a waiver during hanging this, if something happens, I'm liable myself.
Yeah.
We just didn't wanna go messing with y'all's trees without permission first.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, you and I talked several weeks ago, and frankly, I've forgotten it, so I'm glad you, you came in tonight. But I think we probably wanna know who, what this young man's name is, so he can be in the minutes. And one of these days, he can come back and show his grandkids that he's talked to the city council when he was three years old.
Do you wanna say your name into the microphone? No? Okay.
Well, you don't have to say it in the microphone.
Ron Jackson.
Ron Jet?
Ron Jackson.
Okay, well, we're glad to have you.
So Ron and I would take full responsibility if you guys let us hang a treehouse or in the tree for the birds.
Well, sharp-looking young man like that, it's gonna be hard to turn him down, I'd say. Not that anybody would want to, but what's the pleasure to the council?
Make a move, motion we approve it.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, say thank you.
Your first experience in government was a good one.
Shake the mayor's hand. No, they don't wanna shake your hand.
He's sorta bashful. He's bashful, yeah, yeah, he's had a good experience tonight, don't ruin it for him. Okay, anybody else?
No. She asked to have.
Smart boy. Anybody else? Okay, anybody out in the public land, whatever we call it, radio land?
Yes, sir, uh, there is one comment. Uh, they're wondering how long does the Comrade Construction Co. have to complete the sewer work on Commerce?
The entire project, we were told, would take twelve to fifteen months. If they'll keep listening, I've got a report I'll read here in a few minutes. But one of the problems they've run into is how deep they're having to go on Commerce Avenue. In some places, they're having to go seventeen feet, so, but I'll, I'll go through that in a few minutes, Phil. Anybody else on there?
We've had ten viewers at the moment.
Okay, but nobody else wants to comment?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. All right. Oh, no more money?
No.
Oh, okay. Uh, you brought somebody else up to answer.
That's right. Uh, in front of the church, uh, the Watertown Presbyterian Church?
Yeah.
Uh, there's, uh, that hole's still there, and it's gotten deeper.
They've still not fixed it?
They still not fixed it. And it's on public property right at that corner, and it's kinda concerning.
And I'm having insurance problems with it.
April, if you will call Brian tomorrow and tell him, and I talked to him about email earlier today, tell him I need that fixed.
Yeah, cause we've got insurance problems with it.
Okay, well, we don't want you to have any problems with insurance or otherwise. Sure don't want anybody stepping in it and falling.
It's marked off, and maybe it's got a caution tape around it, but still.
Well, it needs to be, needs to be fixed, and then we talked about it before, once the project's done, they'll go back and do some filling in too. Cause we've got several places on Richland Avenue that sunk a little bit, and I'm sure there are others, but I'm just familiar with that, cause I drive by. Okay, anybody else? John, anybody else on there wanting to talk?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, buddy. All right, we're going to our reports here, uh, first in the, in line tonight is Dale Smith to the sewer report.
I don't really have anything this month, I've been pretty quiet on my end. Uh, I did have T deck come out and did a, an inspection, but I don't have a report on them, and he said everything looked happy on his end, so I'm not expecting anything in the report. Other than that, I don't have anything for you.
Looks happy?
That's what he said, he said happy, that's the word I heard was happy, so I like that.
I like that too, I've never heard that used in government context. Okay, any, any questions update, comments? Appreciate you, buddy. All right, um, next would've been the police report, Chief Hinderly. He called me this afternoon about four o'clock, and he said, Mayor, I don't want you to get upset with me, but he said, I'd like to miss the meeting tonight. His son had a basketball game, and he was starting tonight. And I said, Chief, the only way I'd be upset with you is if you didn't go see that boy play ball. So you don't, family comes first. And, uh, so he's, he's, you've got his report there, he didn't have anything remarkable or in addition to report, but I certainly think that's a very valid excuse to go see his son play ball. So, uh, if, I, I don't, I, I can't answer any questions, if you've got them about the report, I can carry them to him. Uh, but I would, uh, if you're okay with it, let's approve his written report.
I wanna make a motion to approve his, I make a motion to approve.
Don't leave me hanging out there.
Police report, we've never approved a report.
As I said, we've never approved a report.
We haven't?
I'll second it.
Well, back, back that out, and I'm thinking county, we do that at the county. So, okay, no wonder y'all sit quiet. Okay, well, I'm glad y'all caught that. All right, Chief Hong?
Hi, I haven't seen you.
He said he wouldn't be here tonight.
Uh, Joe Decker was gonna be here, and he sent me an email. Sure! And, uh, Joe said he was running a little bit late, said he'd be about five minutes after six, but, uh, all right, we'll skip over that. I will, uh, go ahead and tell you that I'd like for you to approve this mutual aid agreement between the city and Wema. We operate under one of those now, this is just a renewal of it. There's a copy of it on your desk, I'm sorry, Chief, and I didn't get it to you quicker. But it basically, they cover for us, they assist us in the city, we assist them and cover for them in zones two and seven. So, uh, and it will continue what we do, so I'd like to recommend that to you.
That's the agreement that was emailed by? I think we got that by email this afternoon.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we accept that agreement as proposed, if we need a motion.
Yep, there you go. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, discussion, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll sign that and get it over to, uh, Wema Director Cooper. Um, I got two or three items of old business, but I'm gonna skip down, I, I put them in an order just for me, and it doesn't really amount to a lot. Uh, we've got, uh, Christopher Lawless and Chris Richardson here tonight to discuss with us, uh, development regulations and some things we probably need to be doing up here pretty soon, so, guys, I'm gonna turn it over to you all, and hopefully, anybody has questions, you're okay with taking questions?
Yeah, that's what, we felt like this was gonna be more of an information thing at this point, I mean, if you wanted to decide, I know everything, and Watertown has to go through two readings, so we can talk about that later as well. Um, the first sheet with the green square on the bottom of it, I was gonna do a two thousand square foot house for reference. Uh, Mr. Steve Casey specifically requested an eighteen hundred square foot home, so that's what we're going with. Um, but this, the, the five bullet points outline what the county currently charges for our building permits in Wilson County. Um, Watertown is at thirty cents per square foot, and then fifty cents for all other structures, and I don't know what the square footage threshold is for that in Watertown, that's, I guess, made as a interpretation when it, when people come to apply for a permit. But to give you an example, for an eighteen hundred square foot house in the county, um, it's charged at seventy cents per square foot, and that comes out to one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars as compared to what Watertown for the same house will be five hundred and forty dollars. Now, I also put below that, the county has an AFT tax, um, which is an ag facilities tax that's charged with every residential unit, and it's five thousand dollars per permit. Um, Watertown does not have a separate AFT, um, so they are not collecting any sort of funds on that. Um, I will let you know, any permit that is pulled in Watertown, um, city limits, they do pay the five thousand dollars to the county. Just because you're in city limits, you are not exempt from that fee. Any permit in Wilson County as a whole pays that permit fee. Um, Lebanon and Mount Juliet, they have their own AFTs on top of what the county is, Watertown currently does not exercise that.
What, what do Lebanon and Mount Juliet have?
I think Lebanon's is forty-five hundred, to the best of my knowledge, and then Mount Juliet's, it's, it's double digits, I think it's ten or twelve thousand per unit. I can double check that if you wanna know the exact numbers, but, um.
You already said enough.
And then the second sheet is the inspections that will be required if you were to adopt building codes for Watertown. Um, if you have any questions based off this bullet point, I'm gonna let Chris Richardson answer that, cause he's the certified inspector, and he's the one, his office will be the one undertaking that. Depending on how you wanna do this, um, I have talked to my finance director, and he's reached out to C test. There are other municipalities throughout the state of Tennessee that the county does, the county jurisdiction does their, their building permitting. Um, in those instances, it is just absorbed into the county. Permits are applied for at the county desk, they're inspected as if they were just a normal county property, and the fees are paid to the county, and it goes into the county's fund. If the jurisdiction wants to make their own fee on top of that, it is their right, but that would be collected at city hall currently, and the county would have to require a receipt before any permitting goes on in, at the, at that level. Um, a receipt from Watertown. But, so there's a couple ways to do it, if there's other ideas on it, we can, um, discuss that. Anything that has to be done that's multi-jurisdictional, we'll have to have some sort of, um, contract in place, or just stating how it's processed. But there are other jurisdictions that have a different jurisdiction doing their inspections throughout the state of Tennessee, so it's not anything groundbreaking, which I was glad to find that out.
Before we get into the building part of it, of the building codes, setting aside the AFT, the ag facilities tax.
Okay.
Would it be your recommendation that we adopt this?
I think it would be a huge benefit to Watertown. Um, I don't, I don't necessarily know about the fee structure, if you have the county do it, this is the fee structure that you will be adopting.
Okay.
But building codes as a whole, yes, I think it would be a huge benefit to Watertown, it would help cover some sort of liability, cause right now, if you go on, uh, T, uh, tennessee.gov commerce website, Watertown is one of the cities listed that is supposed to have state building inspections, and that was knowledge to me probably six weeks ago. I don't know how long they've been on that website, and I can't tell you how many state building inspections have been performed. I know Watertown had eleven permits last year, and I'm ninety percent positive I never saw one. So I don't know if they're doing that on their own, or if they're even being issued, um, but this would help cover a liability for lack of building codes.
Do you know what Lebanon and Mount, if we adopt this, we'd be equal to the county, would be higher in the county or any less?
Correct, it would be the county, and it would be subject to, if the county changes their rates, Watertown would be following those same schedules. You would be, in essence, I don't know, I don't think consulting's the right word when it's government to government, but you would be consulting for county services, and then in exchange, they would be, um, absorbing all the fees. Unless you wanna add your own fee on top of what the county charges, and that would be your all's right at the municipality.
Okay, questions of Christopher, or we go to Chris Richards?
Absorbing all fees, meaning, what does that mean exactly?
It means, like, currently Watertown has a building permit fee at thirty cents per square foot, they pay that, the city of Watertown, and that goes into your all's general fund, is that where your payments go? So that would go into your general fund. If the county exercises, um, review process and inspections, those fees will be paid at the county desk, and they will go into the county's general fund.
So they won't come to Watertown?
That is correct, unless you all want to charge your own fee on top of that, and you all can do that, and then they would still come here, pay, I don't know, it'd be some sort of permit fee, you could leave it at thirty cents even, um, cause that's what it currently is. They would have to bring in a copy of that receipt to the county desk and submit that before any permitting would happen, before any inspections would be allowed inside city limits.
We, we, I'm sorry.
The only way that would be different if we did our own inspections, is what that would be different to us?
Yes, sir, you'd have to, you could either consult, you could either consult to have a building inspector, um, there's certified building inspectors that aren't with a county entity, entity, or you could have one on staff.
Okay.
Which I don't, I did your building permits last year, I mean, I don't know if eleven is going to qualify having one full-time on staff, but.
Let me, uh, give a little history on this. We have never been able, or it didn't make sense to have our own building department for what it would cost to manage and staff it, and same thing with equipment and all that. So we made a deal several years ago with Wilson County Planning, and we paid a little bit of money, they don't make hardly any money off of us, but in return, they do the eleven building permits. So that's in effect right now.
But they just pay this column here right now? If we go into?
No, no, we get all that money, we just pay them.
Yeah, we get this money.
Yeah.
But if we adopt the other, they will have to then pay both of those columns?
Well, you can either choose to just adopt the county's fee schedule and go with that, um, or you can choose to have them pay both, as there will be, I mean, just like on municipality, how Lebanon has an AFT.
What?
Just cause you pay Lebanon's AFT, you're still paying the county's. That'd be the same in here, you all would, y'all don't currently have an AFT, um, that's something we can discuss later down the road as well, if you want. Um, there would just be an additional permit fee for being inside city limits. If you wanted, you don't have to charge that, you could just go to the county and let them handle everything, but there would be no permit money coming into the city of Watertown's budget.
Yeah, we don't need to lose that revenue. Um, so let me ask you this question. We could, we could adopt these rates for Watertown, keep that money here, and then contract with you and Chris or whoever to do our building codes, but, uh, more than what we're paying you now, I understand that.
Yeah, most, most likely, and right now, there's not a contract with the codes depart, or with the permitting office.
Right.
Um, and I don't, I'm gonna be completely honest, I don't know who originates those permit, permits, I don't, or those contracts, and I don't know what the, the. And I don't know what the fee amount would be. I'm assuming it'd probably be, Chris would be involved in that, our finance director. I don't know if you would be our legal counsel on that.
I just draft the fact where I don't get involved on.
And then the county mayor would also be involved in that.
One question. We could, if we did that, we wouldn't necessarily have to contract with the county. As long as we had a contract with a state certified inspector, even if it were an independent individual, maybe a retired general contractor who has experience and they have passed the state licensing to be a certified inspector, we could contract independently with anyone who's a certified inspector.
Yeah. But yeah, I mean, like, and you wouldn't even have to adopt these rates. I'm just telling you, these are the rates that would be adopted if the county handles it.
Right.
You can change your rates. It would take two votes, right?
It will.
Yeah. You could change your rates tonight and tomorrow to make them whatever you want. I mean, you can make them $100 a square foot. I mean, nobody would ever build again, but you could do it.
Yeah, I understand that. But my thought process is too, is if regardless of, if we contract with anybody to start doing the inspections, we're gonna have to increase our fees because, Mike, as you just said, we don't want to lose that revenue and we gotta have money to pay somebody to, who's certified to do the inspection themselves, whether it's you guys or someone independent.
Okay. So if we kept our current fees and we added AFT, that would be the only real difference, minus the fee changing right now, right?
If you kept your current fees and added an AFT, what do you mean, kept your current fee? Like, didn't consult with the county?
Changed the price that they were right now, but we added AFT, that would be, that would be the same as this minus these fees being higher.
Right, but if you, correct, that would be not consulting with the county to review your construction.
Okay.
Because the only, the county's not gonna have another leg of separate fees for Watertown if we're, I mean, you're not gonna get a discount for being a resident of Watertown if the county's the one performing the service.
So we would have our own AFT, which is like our.
Yeah, yeah, and that would always go to the city of Watertown if you all establish an AFT. I've looked into some of that case law. Think the way the government in Watertown's set up, you all are legally allowed to do that. You just have to designate where those funds go and that has to be public knowledge. And you can do it however you want. Some jurisdictions, the county's different, they're on a, I can't remember the type of, the way they're.
We, ours is set up under a private act.
Yeah, the county's a private act. So that had to be established long ago. And you can still honor your private acts and raise those fees and the county can spend their AFT however they want, as long as it's on some sort of public service. If you set up an AFT now, it has to be designated through the public and you have to do it as a percentage base. So you would, you can split it as many ways as you want, based on my research, I think, but it has to be used for public, something that serves the public. You cannot use it for payroll or bonuses or any sort of professional stipend. It would be, you could do parks, Watertown doesn't have a school, because those are handled by the county, but you do parks, roads, sewer. You can do infrastructure, like you could buy a squad car for your police. You just can't do anything payroll-wise.
I'm thinking for, and there's another side of this I want to get to in a minute in certain with Chris.
Okay.
But I'm thinking we would be better off to have the revenue come into our general fund so that we can spend it any way we see fit under the confines of the general fund, rather than limiting ourselves to a specific area. You know, the county had to get that. They had to limit it certain areas to get it to pass.
Correct.
Through the legislature. You can't use it as a, just a revenue raiser. You've gotta designate it. And of course, the issue we had and have had and still have is building schools. So a lot of that goes to schools. But the other side and that I'm thinking about is, we've never had anybody here, let me say it this way, when people build a new house here now, there's nobody checking on to see if they're, what they're putting in there.
Yes, sir.
And that's what I think the building codes would benefit us greatly. And so, not just the revenue, obviously the revenue's a factor, always is. But knowing that, you know, we will have a lot of building going on here in the future.
I mean, yeah, yes, sir.
I don't want us to have a building that burns down some night, somebody gets hurt and people say, there was substandard stuff in there, they didn't do this right. I think it's time for us to get in the 21st century with.
Well, absolutely, absolutely.
Yep. And so, Chris, you chime in. It's your man, your baby.
I was just thinking what you're saying there. I get one more calls with people that they're not, say they were on rebuild or something, they didn't get a permit and then they're calling back and saying, hey, I didn't get inspections. My insurance company won't insure me without a C.O. And it's like, you didn't get, so you didn't get permitted, didn't get inspections. I can't decide a C.O. at the mirrors. You know, you run into that and you don't let go, so mortal war is an increasing issue.
It is, and I've had a couple of calls probably in the last year, 18 months, and people say, what building code are you under in Watertown? And say, zip, we don't have one. And the response is always, why? And you can see the, I, you can't see it, but I'm thinking, they're already figuring my profit's gonna be more 'cause I ain't got a fool with all the subs. Now, I don't begrudge a man making a profit, but again, I don't want to see a fire out there one night that Joe and them have to go fight and get out there and find out that they built a house out of plywood and set up. You know what they need to. So I think we need to get into the building code business here pretty quick 'cause we've got some building coming down the pipe. And even the school in the future. So of course, everybody that wants a school, we've built codes.
The state will definitely, the state will get involved in the school for sure. Even if you were full-blown building codes and exempt from state, if it's a school, they're coming anyway. So that's at least a good thing for that.
So the second page we've got here, inspection information, do you recommend that?
Yeah, that's a pretty standard way, whether it's us or whoever's doing it. That's, I'll say the block inspection is, most people don't do that. The county does that one extra. It was based on something that happened in the past that warranted it, but I think it's a great idea. I mean, people, people need to ensure that they've got it corefield or whatever. If they're putting backfill against it or anchor bolts are set and all those type things. But yeah, it's a pretty general list. Works for residential and commercial. Commercial's usually more in-depth 'cause everything's special to the engineered plan on the front end. But yeah, what questions, how could I help as far as any of this?
I'm thinking I'd like for you to do it. And I guess where I'm headed, and I'm just one of seven, so y'all feel free to propose something counter. But my thinking would be that we increase the building permit fees to what Chris Lawless has given us here, the 70 cents and the others. That we adopt the building codes and that we contract, continue to contract with the county to, for y'all to do this. And so, the variable there, Chris, that we don't have to lie is what that figure should be, what that yearly figure should be.
And you all don't have to adopt the fee schedule if you choose to contract with the county? Because that's, that fee's gonna be charged.
Wait a minute, I want the money to come here.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that we'll have to, I'll have to figure out how to write it up.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
If I followed this correctly, we adopt the codes, when we have to adopt the codes that requires inspections, contract with the county, even, well, the county's gonna want their 70 cents per square foot as part of the inspection contract. 'Cause that's what you get now.
Yeah, no, that's what the county's gonna charge.
That's what the county's gonna charge, is what they charge now, 70. So if we still want, they're getting your money.
Not if you contract, contract your services with the county.
If you're not, you're not following, you know what we got now?
Yeah.
It's minimal.
Yes, sir.
I mean, we pay you like $6,000 or $6,500 a year.
I'll take your word, but I've never seen it.
Okay, it's something like that.
Yeah.
But for 11 building permits, that's not a bad trade. But the building permits that come in, we get the money.
Absolutely.
And then we pay you the $6,500 off. That's what I want to continue doing, knowing that that $6,500 is gonna go up.
Well, okay, the way that contract's written, is that specifically for like a planning partner? Or is that all county services, the way that's working?
Y'all not doing anything but building permits and zoning violation.
I'm really going by 11 years here, I only had one zoning violation for Watertown. Mostly it's board zoning fields and fields cases and planning, side planning and site approval.
Yeah.
And then there's been, I think, two ordinance changes in that same time period. As far as, I would have to figure, I don't know how that's termed. That's not how I discussed it with Aaron, our finance director, to figure out how it was. And that's not how the other jurisdictions that he, got reached out to handle it. I'm sure there could be a way that's, that's enough, but that would be, they would just pay here and bring a receipt of payment to the county and then the county would have to service it under the understanding that there's an end-of-the-year contract payment that's coming to the county for their services, which is how you're trying to lay it out.
I can change at the end of the year, but I told you, I did that. Hold on, hold on to our money as long as we could.
Yeah, and I, I don't care what it is, the honest sum.
Yeah.
This government, you're talking about, but that's the way you're trying to lay it out. Well, you'll mask the county's rates. Watertown still receives the money for their building permit and then there's a contract negotiation on a fee that goes to the county for our services that we're using.
That's what I'm thinking, but I'm just one of seven.
So that would be similar to something that happened. So they would have to pay here, bring that receipt to the county office and the county office would still collect the AFT for that structure for our county portion.
Yeah.
And then, then Chris's team could, I guess, it's a contract before, then he would initiate the inspection process for that, develop that contract.
Now, there's another way to do that, but it puts more work on y'all and I'm not sure it's fair. But all of that money could be collected by you, Chris, or whoever does it. And then, once a month or once a year, whatever, you send us our money. We could do that, but that puts more money on you.
Yeah, I would. Yeah, and I would steer away from that, just.
Yeah, I think you should.
Personally, I mean, we do that for your board of zoning fields cases currently.
Yeah.
And I mean, you had one last year, you have, you've had one this year so far. I mean, to send you all a $50 check, that's not a huge thing. If Watertown actually starts growing at the rate it is, that's gonna be a huge bird's mound to do that.
Yeah, there's some changes coming. We made one on last month or the month before when we approved 60-something.
Yes, sir. I mean, you've got, you've got a possibility to have 94 town hall meetings.
Yeah. You know, that's two streets in Watertown. If you drive up and down the street, it's two more streets. That's a big change for us. Not gonna be on streets, it's gonna be on one block of ground, but.
And I get calls, probably ones a week now for Watertown, on your older city lots, people are trying to figure out if there's enough square footage and if they're satisfied to be able to build another home.
Which is what we used to get. It was, I won't divide my property so my son can build a house here. But now we're getting them where they want 20 or 60 or 90.
Right.
And that's, that's a great big change. I also feel the pressure on that to do that.
And once you all start accepting this, I'll, you'll probably start getting more annexation requests for people in the city wanting to come in. I mean, people in the county wanting to come into your city limits and I'll be up to, planning commission issued recommendation in this board to decide ultimately whether or not you may.
With the building permit fees we've got now and no building code inspections, I'm surprised not, more of them not lining up to come in the city now. All right, let me, let me suggest this and y'all jump in, guys, anywhere. I'm kinda spread out here a little bit, but we've talked about this tonight. Let's move this to next month as far as making a decision on it.
Yeah.
But in the meantime, if you and Aaron Mater, the finance guy, would sit down and talk about what kind of money you would need from Watertown for us to have this arrangement and for Chris to be our building codes inspector or whatever the title would be, we'd be glad, we'd give you a big long tie if you want. And see what, and then bring it back. You know, if we adopt it on first reading and we need, see the need to be, we'll call a special call meeting and adopt it, you know, on second reading a week or two later. But I want to make sure we do it right and get the right amount of money.
Yeah, I mean, I like that idea because I was about to say, we need to have some contract negotiation discussions to find out what it's gonna cost us before we can decide how we want to adjust and set the fees.
And it'll have to be a next year's budget, you know, whatever we agree to.
And if you do it the way that you just discussed, you often, you wouldn't have to adopt the fee schedule the same way if you are intending on the money.
Right. Our fee schedule could be totally independent, but before we can figure out a fee schedule, we gotta know what the, what the cost
Yeah.
of your services is gonna be for you to provide the inspections.
Yeah.
So we've got to start there first.
Right.
And then back into the fee.
And is that right, everybody, that we do it that way and talk about it some more? If you and Aaron, and you and Aaron do that and I'll stay out of that.
Does Aaron have a copy of that contract or?
I believe you're gonna, I believe you're gonna have a hard time finding that contract.
All right.
You get my drift?
Yeah. Does he have a copy of the deposit you might give to you?
He does. We have a copy of our check.
Let's start with that.
Yeah. Well, I know what, I know what the figure is, but the, I believe most of this has been done on a handshake. So we can't do that anymore, I know that. And apparently the amount of money that was involved there in the auditors, either the county or the city, I'm not, that's not concerning. I think the amount you're gonna find is either $6,000 or $60,000. And I pay you that about every June 25th or 26th 'cause I hold the money as long as I can before I give it up. So if we, you know, depending on what it is, we probably need to set that up on quarterly payments or something, guys. Just to be fair to the county and us, so we can raise it forward. We okay with that approach?
Yes. My other thing is the AFT, the impact fee. I know they have to pay the county the $5,000, no matter what. What process can we start making in order to charge 2,000, 3,000, whatever? Is that a hard process or?
It's, you have to go through and adopt an AFT, which is an agribusiness tax, and then you have to designate where those funds are going to be spent. And you break it up into a percentage base. 20% goes here, 20% goes there. And it doesn't have to be equal. You can say 10% goes here and 30% goes there, as long as it's disclosed on where exactly those funds are going. And Watertown can then use them for those projects on those specific public infrastructure needs. But that would have to be passed by this city council.
Okay.
And I've got a draft layout that I can share with you all. And it kinda shows a breakdown. It's not gonna apply to you all because they have things in there that you all don't. Like their school program does, or if it doesn't have that or issues, so you can use those funds in other means.
Ours would probably be public safety and streets and parks, I guess.
I would probably put your water and sewer in there somewhere. I'm talking about minor projects, it would just kind of accumulate.
What does, do you know what Lebanon and Mount Juliet do? Because water and sewers are separate funds, gotta be operated in the black area. And I don't think you mix those funds, I don't think, but that's an educated guess and maybe not too well educated.
Yeah, if we put 10% to water and sewer and 10% to the roads and stuff like, yeah, that's what I was curious about.
But we don't have anything like that in the county. We don't have any water and sewer or nothing like that, so.
Okay, could we, could we proportion some of that money? Yeah. Okay, could we, could we proportion some of that money to go towards water and sewer?
I believe so.
Because I didn't think, yeah, yeah, can you check on that, is what I'm asking, yeah. Because I didn't think we could put it in the big fund, and it go towards that, just like what you just said.
If you put it in the big fund, it won't go to water, sure.
So that's why I would like to know, can we put a percentage towards water and sewer?
I believe so, and that'll be on your all's bookkeeping to kind of track how much money's in that.
Right.
You like sub fund.
Right.
Guys? Well, just one comment about this, and Mayor, I'll share this, I brought the printouts with me. I had some discussions with an attorney at, uh, M T A S
Mm-hmm.
back in the summer. And he has a slightly different legal opinion as to whether or not we can or cannot legally have an A F T without sending something through the General Assembly in Nashville.
I think that's what's going to come to.
So I will share those, I printed out those emails, and I'll share that with you, but he was of the opinion that we would have to get our state representatives involved and try to get something through the General Assembly before we could add an A F T. And that's because of a law that was passed in two thousand and six. And we did not have A F Ts prior to two thousand and six, therefore we are not grandfathered, and we have to go through the General Assembly.
And the county got theirs in before that, and that's how we, how we got it in.
I see that, because I.
We got by a year or two.
Yeah.
Saw it coming down the pipe.
Right. I've, like I said, I've, I've done a good bit of research earlier this past summer on that, and I saved those emails, because I knew it was going to be coming up at some point.
Okay. Guys, thank y'all for coming up, taking your time, and we'll talk more.
One last thing, look ahead, if you, if you decide, if and when you decide to go on, whether or not you use us or whatever, give me a call, because there's language in the resolution, these, the state language that they want in there.
Okay.
Just copy and paste it, and I'd be happy to fill y'all in on that, so.
All right, that'd be.
So you don't have to do it once, instead of having to call you and do it again. I've, I've had that happen to me, so.
That, that'd be helpful, Chris, and, uh, but yeah, I think we're going to, my goal, and I don't hear anything different around the table, we'll try to make a decision in the February meeting on where we're headed, and then wind it up in March, unless we need to do it quicker. And get these things in place, and then get a contract in place to go July one.
Well, as of, right now, I only have one, one handy permit that would not be subject to that. And, I mean, those townhomes, they're, they're part of the agreements out.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't want to seem that we're abusing somebody, but that's the next big thing coming, that's the next revenue thing, and there'll be more after that, it's coming.
I have talked to, I have talked to some of the local builders that have built in your community about Watertown adopting an A F T, if it comes to that. And, I mean, I wouldn't go off the pedestal and just make a ten grand, but, um, they did really know that, you know, a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, nobody's going to bat an eye at that.
Next figure I had in my mind, if we go that route. Yeah. That's a five, the county gets is already a pretty good lead. Okay, thank you, guys. Uh, Joe Decker came in, and Joe, we, we eased through the fire report, I was going to come back to it whether you came in or not. You gave us a yearly report, as you always do.
Yes.
And I wonder if people know how many calls y'all do a year in the city and county, it's pretty phenomenal.
I'd be happy to answer. Uh, so thank y'all, I was listening, and I saw, uh, on YouTube that you approved the mutual aid agreement, so thank y'all for that. Did anybody have any questions about that, even though it's already gone through? Be happy to answer that. So it's going to streamline a lot of things on operations. Um, we're going to have a meeting on that with the county heads between the two departments here, probably in the next two to three weeks, to get everybody on board with that and make sure everything's been dispatched as well, so if we get any updates from it, I'll bring it back to you. On the fire report, so I think everybody got everything, um, but on the yearly, so we did five hundred and thirty-four calls total last year, which is actually down from our normal average. Um, the last few years, we've been trending between six hundred and six hundred and fifty calls, uh, which is pretty substantial. So some of that, uh, is because that we have changed that response protocol, so we're going to the county a little bit less. Previous, uh, previous years, I think that split was about a sixty forty county on top. Uh, so it's starting to match a little bit closer. You'll see it's split two thirty-three in the city and three oh one in the county. Um, and those numbers are pretty, pretty close to being pretty spot on accurate within one or two. Obviously, a lot more were paged by nine one one, that's our primary dispatch. Every now and then, we're paged by W E M A, depending on how things come in, so the majority of the time, you'll see that a fire alarm come through the fire alarm company, uh, something that's come in from S O or P D, and it kind of filters through their dispatch. Anybody have any other questions over there? Do you want a breakdown? I'll have a little bit more in depth on that, it just, I like to nerd out on data, that's kind of what I do full time a lot of the times, so. Probably around March, um, I'll have some breakdowns about when we were dispatched, how often we got up after midnight, um, how those calls are, and a little bit more in depth about them, if anybody just wants to read, but, um, happy to answer any questions on those.
You guys have any questions, you jump in.
I got one question, the old suburban. Have we decided, we've, I know we voted to surplus it last meeting, I believe. Have we decide, have, have you guys had any discussion about how you want to try to go about selling that, or?
I'm not a hundred percent tracking on that. I think the chief had talked to the mayor a little bit about a county, say.
Yeah, we've talked a little, I don't think he's come up with a decision on it yet, what he wanted to do.
Okay.
And then it's looking at, y'all are looking at something else too, aren't you? Another donated vehicle?
No, that didn't.
Okay.
That did not pan out, no, they, they did not want to deal with the government. We had about a five minute turnaround, and I told them, if we're going to take responsibility for a vehicle, I need more than five minutes. Respectfully to them, so.
They didn't want to deal with the government?
They, nah, I don't know who they want to deal with.
Imagine that.
It didn't seem like anybody from the conversation we had. But, uh, there was an opportunity, every now and then, and I think even, I watched the E M A committee last month, talking about those grants, there are some things that come open for the fire department, just because of how we find things. Short opportunities, um, but that one in particular was a little too short, so they'd, somebody had reached out about a donated, I guess, a surplus ambulance, um, and it would have been a converted rescue, which would have been twenty years newer than what we've got now. Um, and I sent an interest email back, and we tried to work through that process, and they wanted to know if I wanted then and there, couldn't get any mileage on it, couldn't get any update on where it ran. I, I had to beg for a picture, so politely said, that's, that's okay.
Okay.
Part of, but anyway, yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll check back and find out.
All right. Appreciate you. Anybody else, comments, questions?
I got to kind of bug y'all about your attic. I think, uh, me and Hinderlight are probably going to try to make a little safe storage room for them up there. So I need to see what's, y'all's, not y'all's, or? Yeah.
Mostly from the door to the right. It looks a little more scattered now, but it looks like somebody's cleaning the corner, I guess.
I know, maybe doing it, but yeah.
All right. Yeah, come on up, welcome anytime. Generally speaking, P D is off to the left. I think the, the sports teams are using kind of in the center, and then off to the right, we've got the workout, the classroom, and then the training area, but generally everything we keep behind the projector screen.
The paperwork storage on side, and I think he's going to want to make a more, I guess, more secure area for lockup or other stuff that's, they don't have room for downstairs, so.
Yeah, come on up, there's a lot of room.
All right.
Outside of that, I was going to say, uh, if we look down the codes and adoption rate, I'd love to be part of that process. Um, obviously that affects us on the response side of it, so, uh, if there's anybody that I can bring in to recommend things for a small town, my boss at work sits on the codes board for the state.
Okay.
Um, so I can absolutely get some folks down here to help out, and if you want to take out some language or take things out of the code or adopt on to it, we have those options, so I'd be happy to offer some ears, so.
And you've got an in there.
I, I got a little bit of in, I, I know some folks that can help us out, so.
You know, the old saying, not so much what you know, but who you know.
That's it. So I'd be happy to help and, and get involved, and it helps us too. Uh, we've been going, doing some pre-plans in the community, some of the stuff's been building. Uh, we kind of sneak in there in the evening sometimes and take a look at the rafters, the floors, and how they're doing things, so, uh, we'd love to be a part of that process.
Want you to be. Okay.
All right.
Think we're going to convert some of the lights up there to L E D. Probably easier to convert everything at once, if y'all want to get together and all do one big glob of S. I noticed there's a lot of light that's not, not really doing much up there, so.
There's some, there's some improvements, yeah.
I'll give you a shout.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to convert it.
Your buddy good?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank y'all.
I need to go back, or not go, yeah, return to something that John, you said somebody was asking about the sewer project? Earlier?
Yes, sir, the Conrad construction code.
Okay, let me read to you what they have told me today. I asked what the status was. Some of these things don't mean a whole lot to me, but they mean to y'all. All main line to be cured in place is complete. Two hundred and twenty out of two hundred and seventy service laterals are complete. April, don't worry about writing this down, I can give you this if you need it. Manhole crew is waiting on weather to start rehab on the manholes. Commerce Road is slow going due to the depth, sixteen to seventeen feet deep and cold weather. Starting the reconnection of the existing sewer on the east side of Commerce Road to the new sewer land. Installation on the east side of the creek is waiting for better weather due to the A R A P permit that says crossing creek in dry conditions. Uh, still some sidewalks to be repaired, but weather has been too cold. Still cleanout boxes to be raised, but dirt is too wet right now. It goes with what you're talking about, but we'll get one raised quicker than that. Uh, and then what I was told, hang in there with us, we will get it done. I don't have any doubt about that, I'm just, you know, it's a process, and maybe there's going to be a lot of things that have to be done, so I hope that answers whoever's on there's question. Uh, I tried to get, uh, some information from Steve Jones, our engineer today, he didn't get back to me. But I will tell you that the, uh, the gentleman who is doing our water loss survey, he sent me some information, I'll send it out to you. Nothing to vote on tonight, but we've not made a lot of progress on that, but hopefully we will. Going along with the water loss thing is the thing we've all been dreading, and that is the water and sewer rate increase that we have to do. I don't have a recommendation for you now for that, but I went to the Tennessee Association of Utility Districts to ask them to do this for us, and they said they were backed up and were entirely too busy, but they gave me the name of a private individual in, uh, in Wilson County who does this stuff. His name is, um, Bob Adams. He is a C P A. He, uh, gave me a proposal to, what I'm looking for is to look at everything we do, what we pay for, the revenues we got coming in, and the debt service we got to deal with, and tell me what we have to establish the rates at to stay in the black. And that's not going to be pretty, I can tell you, but, um, he told me his billing rates, well, first of all, he said, I've been providing audit and consulting services to utilities in the state of Tennessee over the past twenty years, and it is something I enjoy doing. Regarding his fees, our billing rates for this type of service range from a hundred and ninety per hour to two hundred and ninety per hour, depending on the level of service needed. I would estimate a project that you described would probably have a fee range of six thousand to ten thousand dollars, based on the depth of service and the condition of the records. I can tailor to exactly what you will need. He said if there was an order from the comptroller's office requiring a rate study, the fee would be more. We don't have that now, we do have something from the comptroller's office requiring the water loss survey. So, uh, I sent him something back today telling him we were on a very limited water and sewer fund budget, and while his fee range does not seem excessive to me, I'm looking to establish a new rate pretty quickly to cover our budget to deal with inflationary costs, debt payments, and grant matches. I believe we can provide you the records you will need, and can provide you copies of as many yearly, yearly audits as you need. My issue, as I said to him, is urgency. So what I'm going to recommend to you tonight, so we can get him going, is to, um, I'm going to recommend to you that we employ this gentleman at a cost, and I'm going to split the difference here, not to exceed eight thousand dollars. And get him started on this, because we have a large debt payment coming due in May.
You make a motion?
I do.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion, y'all understand what, what we're doing?
What was his name again?
Bob Adams. And he is a C P A. I do not know Mr. Adams, but I have communicated with him. Okay, further questions, comments? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes are weaker when you talk about spending money. Mr. Dowd's request of a thousand dollars looks a lot better now in comparison to that. Uh, nothing on street paving, folks, turntable. Watertown Historic Park over there, railroad. We have a kickoff meeting with the federal government on February twenty, two thousand and twenty-five, to tell us what we have to do and what hoops to jump through to begin the process, and that's the engineer, uh, has set that up, so, um, should have something to report to you on that at the next meeting. Let me go through a few budget related matters, and then, uh, when we belong. We, uh, I've been advised by the bank and by Chief Hinderlight that we have a very old police explorers account sitting over there that hadn't been any money put in in years, and it's drawing a service charge of five dollars a month, so we need to close that and collapse that money into the general fund designated for the police explorers, if it should ever happen. So I would like to close that account and get that five dollar a month expense off there for each of them. So, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion on that? All right, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, the audit for twenty-three, twenty-four, the draft is done. We should have the final audit, um, by next month. Actually, we should have it by the end of this month, when we get it, we'll send it out to you, or allow you to come by here and pick it up. I want to talk to you about the last two audits, and then where we are right now. We are required, I've already mentioned this, the water and sewer fund, we have to bring in more revenues than we spend money. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we fell short by five thousand and thirty-one dollars. Last year, we turned that around and finished thirteen thousand, almost fourteen thousand to the good. This year, on your budget report that you get, April sends out, we're about four thousand dollars under, but I'm not too concerned about that, because the water and sewer, I better get my notes here, the water and sewer charges that we assess are coming in. We are fifty-three point two percent through of the budget year. Water rates, uh, water revenues are up fifty-five point five percent, sewer fifty-four point four percent. So we'll, we're fifty-four hundred dollars under right now. I think we'll be okay on that. Parks and Recreation, we are in twenty-two, twenty-three, we finished eighty-six hundred to the good. Last year, seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-nine. I'm hit, I'm hitting you with a lot of numbers, sorry about that. And Parks is down just a little bit, but I'm not concerned about that either. Once we start playing baseball, money will come in. Uh, we are down, uh, nope, wrong one. Thought I had all this ready to walk through. We're down, uh, two hundred and fifteen dollars, that's why I say we'll, we'll cover that. Here's where I'm concerned, and that's the general fund. In twenty-two, twenty-three, we finished eighty thousand dollars to the good. On a seven or eight hundred thousand dollar budget, that's pretty good. But last year, this audit, this draft audit, we're thirty thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-four cents more expenditures than we took in revenue. We can't do that. And the reason is that we're going to have an audit finding that says expenditures are in excess of appropriations, and they're going to get on me and say, the law says you got to take in more money than you spend. I understand that. Uh, but they'll, they'll still tell. Uh, but they'll, they'll still tell me that. That brings me to my current budget report through January the tenth. I'm not pleased with where general fund is at all. We are way under on revenue from what we should be on expenditure, and we should be closing that gap at the end of December and January, but we haven't significantly anyway. But as I went through this stuff this afternoon, I'm not convinced that I've got the best numbers here that I need. So we're gonna, before I get too bent out of shape, we're gonna go through this and break this down. I'm gonna go to work with April and Lisa over the next couple of weeks hopefully, and go through these line items and see what's, what's right, what's wrong. For instance, there's a uh, well, let me make sure I tell you what is the right thing. Let me just say I'm concerned. Revenues are running, it should be fifty-three point two percent. Revenues are at forty-four point six percent, which means we're gonna have more revenue come in as property taxes come in this month and next month. My problem is on that fifty-three point two percent, our expenditures are at sixty-three point two percent. That's ten percent over. I gotta find a way to cut that. And it may not be pretty. I'm gonna try to avoid that, but I gotta get better numbers before that, but I may have to shut some things down, just to be honest with you. And I'm not talking about major stuff, but I'm talking about I may have to cut some things, because I'm not gonna go in down there again this year uh, next year, and then say you spent more money than you brought in. So I just said all that to you. I don't want you to be alarmed. We're, we're five and a half months from the end of fiscal year. We can deal with it. But we gotta start dealing with it now. We can't wait till April or May to do it, so. We'll see where that goes. Been sort of dreading mentioning this, but it's people's money. They pay taxes and they got a right to know it. We'll get it straightened out. Uh, and I'll, I'll commit to that and do what we need to do. I want to mention one other thing, and then we'll go to, I know Steve's got something he wants to talk about. I put on here a discussion of Watertown municipal code four, two oh four about benefits and employment matters. I read through that again, too, our city code on that, and I was on, I was thinking the last two or three weeks, I'm gonna make some recommendations to you on that, but I'm not. Simply because I think what we have will work. It just needs to be enforced more rigidly. We have people that are taking off sick and not letting us know before they do. I've had some of that. We've got people, a couple of employees, that every time they get a sick day, they automatically take it. It's not a vacation day, it's a sick day. You're supposed to be sick or had a death in your family or something, so I'm gonna take some steps to, to deal with that. They're not gonna get sick days unless I approve them in advance. Unless, of course, they're in, you know, get taken to the hospital overnight or something, but sick days are not vacation days. And uh, so I'm gonna tighten that up in my enforcement of it. That's on me, and I'll tell you that. But uh, I've had to issue some discipline within the last week. Um, and I may have to go a step further as early as tomorrow. So uh, not gonna say that publicly or use any names at this point in time, but wanted to let you know that. So if you hear some stuff out there, the mayor's done this, or the mayor's done that, depending on what they're saying, it's probably right. So. Okay, that's all I've got under new business. I put Steve on there. He wants to talk about the old city hall building.
Actually, there hasn't, much hasn't changed since last month. Uh, Gerald Lamerson is still working with, working with the weather and the coldness and the water. They haven't been able to start the brickwork, and they have to do the brick repairs before they can start with the roof. Um, I did meet Bob and um, Tody over there last week. I emailed out several pictures to, I think, all of you about what's up there, what's in that building, and uh, again, with we get suitable weather that's not single digits in the mornings and whatnot, uh, Bob is gonna start working on, one, getting the trash out first because the seagland tiles have gotten wet from the roof leak and fallen in, so they're a tripping hazard. So we've gotta get all that cleaned up first, and then they're gonna start um, moving things out of that building and into the storage over here, anything that's, that's salvageable or worth keeping. Um, part of it may require getting a dumpster in the alley and just building a chute out the side window and shoving it all in a dumpster.
Be, be easier to carry it up down the step.
Exactly.
Made that trip to me.
But again, e- everything on the old city hall right now is kind of on hold due to the, we've had the snow, the, the rain, the cold temperatures. It's, it's hard to get that kind of work done in, in the middle of winter. So, that's it on that building. Uh, and uh, I, I see Gerald at least once a week, and anyway, I'll be keeping tabs on that and on the progress going forward.
Um, I'm glad Mr. Dowd's here. Ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of those things up there in that building are way past being usable or needing to be saved. My only concern has been there may be some things in there, because there're gonna be records up there forty, fifty, sixty years old that might, should be in the archives, you know, just to say this happened at a certain time, or, I don't have an example.
Yeah.
But Bob has bought fifty banker's boxes to load this stuff up, to get it out there, and uh, at some point in time, we'll try to go through it real quick and see if there's anything. Might ask you to take a look at it and see if.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we'll file thirteen.
Yeah. I know for a fact, Bob, there's some, there's some bound books up there that I believe have some old property records in them from years back, and that may be something that, that you would want, I mean, cause I, I haven't looked in them, but they are bound, and it says, I think it's property slash tax is on the, is on the, the spine of, of the book, so I don't know exactly if it's just tax records or if it's actually deeds and, and that type, type of thing.
Appreciate that. Anything else on that, Steve?
No.
All right, appreciate you. Uh, informational items, uh, let me go down through these real quick, and we'll go around the table. Reminder to everybody to complete their statement of disclosure of interest by January thirty-first. You can get that in. Uh, if not, you'll get an ugly letter from. So, uh, do that. If I can help you with that, I'll be glad to do that. Our signups are going on for Watertown Community League, T-ball, softball, and baseball, so uh, get people signed up, tell them to, so we can get started early like we did last year. We had a good year. And uh, talked about with Jeff Tunks last week for about thirty minutes, and we talked about what he wants to do in each one of our sport seasons. We have T-ball, baseball, softball season, and we have a soccer season, and we have a football season, and we have a basketball season that we're in now. So we play something up here pretty much year round. Very proud of that, in fact, that we can do it in our community and our kids don't have to go somewhere else to play unless they choose to. Uh, I got next month a problem with this meeting date again. When the county changed their third Monday night meeting in January and February because of the holidays, we used to go to the fourth Monday. They decided to go to the third Tuesday, which is our night. So uh, I, I need to move my meeting next month. To a night that's convenient for y'all.
Uh-huh, I already had it that we moved it to the twentieth.
You did.
We did.
To the what?
We, we did January and February at the same time and approved to move it to that Thursday night.
Okay.
The twenties?
February twentieth?
Yeah, that's what I already got now.
Yeah, we, we did, we did both months last month.
Good, good. That made that decision easy. Okay, all right. Michael.
I got a couple of questions. Um, has there been any uh, report on the progress um, for Nixel? Cause he had, he had mentioned something, um, that they were coming, I guess, to integrate it into our systems or something the beginning of January, and I didn't know, I hadn't heard anything. I didn't know.
I hadn't knew, uh, I didn't take data from the second one we talked.
Okay. Um, second thing is, so that pole in front of my house that's leaning up against the other pole, it'll be two years next month that that pole was hit. Huh? They've already moved all their stuff. Now it's, I think the electric company just needs to come and remove the pole, and they had been called and called and contacted and all the things, so, I mean, I, I don't know, ca- I mean, can we, as the city, can we find them if they don't pull the pole down?
Well, I, I know, I know Gerald's in conversation with Middle Tennessee about the pole in front of the old city hall, because it is warping and falling away from the building and pulling the brick with it, so that maybe if we can go at them with the fact that you've got two poles you need to address, and that's something that can be two birds with one stone, so to speak, get them out here to address both of them.
That would be great.
Who's our contact over there at Middle Tennessee Electric? Okay.
Double check with Gerald, cause he's got one, too, that he's already spoken to about the pole in front of the old city hall.
I'll communicate with you, then I'll call somebody out there tomorrow. I don't know who it's gonna be, but I'll talk to somebody in facilities and say, we need you to come up here.
Okay, yeah, cool. Thank you.
Let me think of it. Okay. Caleb?
Yeah, uh, I was just gonna ask clarification. Someone said earlier, did he say, or you may have said it, that you are getting calls from people who wanna split their property and build? So do we have any code on that, or you can do that, or?
Comes through the planning commission.
So theoretically, if I wanted to push my house over and build six townhomes on my property, that's comes to you guys and then?
You would, you could push your house over, but the six townhomes, you'd have to develop the site plan and bring it through the planning commission. And if it involved rezoning, which you probably would, cause you talked.
Well, whatever, the.
Yeah, but that would come through the planning commission and then the heat.
Okay. I was just curious about that, cause, I mean, is there any, uh, like, as far as historic committee goes, is there anything against that? Like, is there like an age on houses that can't do that with?
Depends on whether or not you're in your district.
If a person owns a property and it's for their personal gain, and they wanted to take it down, all they have to do is put, they have a plaque, they have a plaque on it that's owned by the bank, and take it down, so.
So, can we as a city, like, do anything as far as making some kind of code or whatever it would be for those kinds of things?
Yeah, we have it in our planning regulations. Uh, you know, zoning and subdividing and that type of thing. And then the historic stuff works in, in the historic district, but not citywide.
Historic district's just the square, correct?
It extends, the picture I have, in fact, it's on the website, it's a little bigger than just a square, but it's different streets. You want to look at that, it's on the good Watertown, so you can look at the historic, they'll have historic district map on there.
I was just curious as far as, you know, with things that are coming and that's kind of coming to the norm, like, if we're gonna be historic Watertown, what are we gonna do to safeguard someone, you know? Look, take my dad's house for instance, it's right next to the Waters' house. It's built in nineteen twenty, like, whenever time comes, you know, I made my sister sell that. Was to keep some, a developer from going, huh, we'll shove this over and I'll build however many right here, right next to historic home of Watertown, you know, kind of thing.
What, what street do you talk about? Richland?
Uh, I mean, just for example, Waters. I mean, my dad lives right next to the Waters' house, so, I mean, just, I'm not saying just that road, but just for example, like, as I'm saying, we are saying we're historic Watertown. That's kind of the draw per se.
You know Richland, where they built those two houses up? Every house from there to Main Street has gotten, if they ever are destroyed, they gotta be built up just like those.
They do.
Yeah.
Water.
I just, I'm just saying, as a city, do we, I, I mean, I'm not probably the minority, but I just, I would hate to see a bunch of historic homes get shoved over in lieu of townhomes.
That's, no, you, you're asking some good questions, and that's probably one time and
Yeah, and that's why.
Tom's gone, Chris and Chris come back, those good questions. But uh, something you may also wanna do, Caleb, is the historic, uh, we have a historic committee that meets pretty much monthly. Sometimes they don't, but you may wanna appear in front of them, and they might, you may wanna take a look at making that property historic.
Well, I, I'm not saying just his in particular, but, I mean, I just don't know if as a city, we could, like, have some kind of wording for safeguarding for that.
I was approached last year by a constituent that said, there's this land for sale right now. It's a one dwelling. What's the chances? But it was quite, I mean, it was more than an acre. Two homes could go on it. What's my chances of it getting two homes? So I went to somebody on the complaining commission, said, what's the chances? They said, it's a gamble. I'm not gonna tell you. But if it would support two homes, they're probably gonna put two homes.
Yeah.
So, I see what you're saying. We want growth, but do we want it at the extent of losing our historical part? No.
Yeah, I mean, the one that happened last month, you know, that's kind of, it's back, you know, out of sight on a big empty property.
And those two that we did on, um, I don't wanna say any names, but I don't know the name of it. Where Sonia lives, that road that Sonia Lamerson lives on.
Yeah.
So they put two new homes there. I think that was a one acre, what, not a one acre, a one dwelling hot or one, but those two homes look nice, like they fit in well, like.
And, and that's, I mean, you know, I guess maybe we need to look at as far as if you're gonna do that, like, making it fit a certain style or whatever, but I just know it came up a while back ago, right there in front of Brown Lake, those two, they wanted to develop that. You know, some of those properties, they're pretty deep, so I mean, they could potentially put a lot there. And I, I mean, I personally would just hate to see uh, you know, older homes, or even on Main Street and some of these historic roads, you start shoving stuff down and putting that up, because it just, to me, it's not aesthetically pleasing as far as if you're going for the historic thing, so.
The way I've seen it done, I mean, not, not in Tennessee, but other states, Arizona, Nevada, California, the city has to go and designate at a certain area. And at that point, they could say, these type of homes, the homes that we've been, like, we were approved in this type of area. But the city has to, doesn't make that a like water street, because that's all historic, that could be easily done. Uh, could make it historic, and then those type of homes would have to be built. You know, if they were torn down, so. But you could put two homes there, but they have to look somewhat historic.
Yeah.
But that would be making the code.
Yeah, you, you're really kind of talking about two different things. Historic, the, the older buildings or whatever. If you don't wanna push down, you want them to be made historic. But if they're on a lot where there's enough room there to subdivide it and have enough road frontage for, for two lots, that could be done, subject to planning commission approval.
Yeah, I would be.
If, if the lot is large enough to meet the
And you've got enough setback.
And you've got enough setback to meet dividing it into this, you know.
But if we said specifically in whatever, I don't know what it would be called, but we said on Main Street, on Waters, wherever, we can only have a one dwelling or it has to be
You need to start that through historic to meet the, and Tom, Tom, Chris advises them, so when he's back.
That's a great idea, Caleb.
When he's back, y'all, when that's and I'll, when I see him, I'll tell him to be ready for that, or ask him to be ready. Uh, you okay? Anything else?
Uh, another thing, I just had a couple people asking me about codes as far as those getting enforced. Just noticed several properties with like a lot of junk cars and things like that. I don't know what's been done about that.
Chief Hinderlight, that holds off him out in, um, Tom. Chris, I gotta get these. Chris said tonight he only had one pending down there. these, Chris said tonight he only had one engine down there, so I was a little surprised at that.
Okay.
But chief is unique.
All right. That's it.
You good?
If I had someone per se who wanted to be our building inspector, but not full-time, just an on-call bias paid per call, would that be something the city is interested in?
Wouldn't be interested in that. It's going to be a revenue time for me.
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was asking.
More revenue.
Not cut, but make all the money, you know, let's come to Watertown for Watertown's housing.
Yeah. No, I'd be interested in that.
True.
I have two things. Um, one, since we're on boards of committees, I, somebody asked me something, so I went on our website, Watertown's website, and the committees are not up today. So can we get whoever that is that updates our website, Ms. April?
Yeah.
Um, it's even got people like updating us, but like the Parks and Recreation Committee, uh, the beer, the whatever, all, they're not up today.
There's the planning commission.
The planning commission, yeah, none of those are up today.
Okay. I gotta make some reappointments and I'll probably do that next month. Intended to tonight, I just couldn't get to.
Yes. So if we can get that updated.
If, if they don't want to full with the website anymore, I'm happy to take it over. I can pile it on top of the police department website and put it all on the same one, you know? If they don't want to full it anymore, I'm happy to do it.
I don't know who's in charge of it.
Uh, we send stuff over and I, I'm sure he doesn't independently say, are y'all up today?
Yeah, right. Right. The website looks great, it just needs a bit.
Y'all know my age here and I'm not going to say it publicly, but I'm not the guy to go looking at websites. You know, I still use the encyclopedia, so I need to, I understand that.
So with that said, the reason why I got on there is someone is looking for a building and who to contact on the square, that a building may be empty for them to have a church service. And I didn't know who to contact, so that's what made me get on this site to find out who's on different boards and chairman of this and, but if somebody's looking for a building to start a church, what would be the best avenue for them to go?
Find out who owns it.
I was going to say, you got to start with the building owner.
But they don't even know if any is available.
Maybe the chamber?
That's kind of, okay, that's kind of where the direction I led them.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if y'all had any more suggestions.
Probably the chamber.
Okay. That's where I led them. That's it.
Good. Steve?
Um, this has come up a couple of months and you kind of mentioned on it earlier about going through the budget. Uh, you know, it would be, at some point, we need to start training other people to be able to read the budget the same way you do. So we, I don't want to, I realize we're busy, I just don't want to forget about that.
Oh, it's coming.
Yeah.
You can't forget the budget.
Yeah. No, you can't. And, um.
I get a weekly report, believe me, I look at it sometimes just shaking my head. Uh, but no, we're gonna, I'm going to get more ideas on the budget.
Yeah. And, uh, well, I've got something else that I'll bring up next month because I really don't have anything with me that I want to present yet.
Okay. All right. Up to you. Al?
We're going to talk about that Lowe's business.
Yeah. Yeah. Sent some stuff out to you about that grant from Lowe's. I think that's something I'd like to pursue.
Absolutely.
Uh, I didn't read down close enough to see what the deadline was for application.
I didn't either, but it's, you know, it's a lot of things that we could use this for over here in the park.
Yeah.
The pickleball courts, the resurfacing, redoing the, uh, basketball courts, a horse show ring. We need money for that.
Yeah.
We might be able to get money for that also, so.
The lighting, you mentioned.
Yeah, well.
It sounds pretty good if we could.
Yeah. I, I responded on that because.
It's the 18th.
The, the things I was thinking, like, like I said, was lighting for all the fields, including the arena, because we know it's got electrical problems. We've had people in here discussing that. There's all kinds of things we could do with the park, but I think the deadline on that was mid to late February.
February 18th.
Now the lights on the ball field are okay.
No, they need to be replaced.
Well, there might be some lights, but.
No, they work, but if you're out there trying to play ball, you lose the ball, they're not good lights.
They just got to be adjusted. You adjust the lights.
How long, I'm not going to argue the point, but the lights need replaced.
You don't remember much yet.
But, uh, and, and something else in that Lowe's email that, like I said, it's the 18th, they're, they're looking for things that are community based and, and, you know, so I mean, I, I think we have, like you said, we have a lot of things that could, we could, and I don't know if we need to get Mr. Smart to look at helping us write a proposal for that, but I think it would be worthwhile to write a good grant request on that opportunity.
I think it would be. I don't know if we can get it done by February.
The Lowe's grant is actually just a, excuse me, is just a fill-in. So if we can, yeah, if we can fill in, we can.
So what y'all want to fill in? You want to, for the community park?
I think so.
Parks and Recreation.
All phases of it.
Yeah. Everything from lights, bathrooms.
Such as stands you need.
The lights just need to, we need you to look and see like, just adjust the lights.
Okay. We'll, we'll, part of the problem is the wiring.
No, I ain't got.
I'll take a stand and fill in the end, or if somebody else wants to, that's fine. Just get it where we need to by the 18th. So you want three forks community park and what else?
No, I think the parks and recreation are that, whichever one.
The stuff that's in our park here, including the salad club and.
But if you do parks and recreation, want it cover anything and everything that we do?
It could, but they might want it to be a little bit more directed. I don't know that, but I'm just guessing that. Um, going along with that, I was in a meeting this afternoon on another matter, but the gentleman was the state field office director for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and he told me about some grants, he told us about some grants, uh, one of which is Community Development Block Grant. We've done a couple of those over the years. They are difficult to get simply because it's based on the income of your community and what they did the last two times we applied is they applied the, the median income for the entire county. Well, that shot our possibility of approval. And I don't hold out much hope for that, but I did talk to him about it and he gave me about that much information. I just asked him if that was homework. He said, no, I don't do homework very well, so.
One other thing might.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, Hal, I didn't mean to.
I would, I hadn't given up on our sign out front by a long shot, and that might be something that we could tie in with it also. The park sign, the sign in front of the city hall, uh, it's, I want a sign out front and I'm always looking for it. While I'm on the city board, it's going to come up pretty regularly.
Well, and I'm all right with that, Al. I'll tell you this, and we've got some folks here, maybe hadn't been to a lot of meetings or maybe this is their first. We got a lot of issues here, just like anybody else, turn on the news or rig the newspaper for still such a thing about things, but all we need is money. We can handle all these, all we need is money.
Have you thought about doing handicap accessible in the park?
We have and will, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, just so many things we need to, to do, but I'd want that.
I have a connection for a handicap swing idea for you.
Good. Will you send it to me? Email it to me? Thank you.
You want to fill out that application?
We can fill it out. It actually looks like it's, seems to be frowned against the city filling it out. It's more like a, you guys would fill it out in hopes that our city would get it.
You say you guys.
I think it's saying like a city.
Oh, the city looking for improvements to the city.
Okay.
We can fill it out, um, but it, it seems to be more pointed towards the citizens of the city looking to improve their city.
So if we filled it out and then recruited somebody to be the applicant?
So if the hardware's still with the applicant. Yes. Or, or if we put this on our, our Facebook page or whatever it is.
Yeah, I think it's just like a personal, like.
We're happy to do that.
Y'all get it done, I'll sign.
Yeah. All right, we're happy to.
Anything we do to improve our park.
I'll get my wife to fill it out.
You'll ask your wife. Like I said, say a word, you don't tell nobody, does it? All right. Anybody, anything else?
No.
I'm, I'm sorry, I got to wake you. I didn't mean.
No, that's, that's it.
Still mad because y'all beat us in basketball.
Sorry about that. That's a good game.
No, it wasn't.
One point.
I know, and we missed a foul shot.
We were 16 points ahead at one time.
I know, I was listening to.
Free throws hurt you.
Yeah. It's free, it's free points. Um, all right. Appreciate everybody. If we're done, I'll take the, I don't know if we're still there or not, I got five of my eight grandchildren at the house, so I'm going to try to get there.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank y'all for coming out. Appreciate everybody being here.